And now we will be moving on to our recognition of Susan Epstein. Dr. Donna Lewis?
Thank you. Well, we are so excited and honored to have Susan Epstein with us this evening. We are recognizing 16 years of service here in Goleta Union School District as trustee. And we have a number of distinguished panelists this evening that have a few words they would like to say about Susan. And maybe even someone will call out from the audience as well. So please sit back and enjoy this moment as we honor Susan Epstein. And to start us off, I'd like to have Supervisor Joan Hartman.
Thank you so much for allowing me to join in this tribute to Susan. She's a star in Santa Barbara County's firmament. And how fortunate the Goleta community, the children and families that she's devoted 16 years to serving in the Goleta School District. It's a premier school district and as I look around at the Zoom, a powerhouse board. Amazing. Anyone who knows Susan knows she isn't someone just to warm the chair. She doesn't do it slapdash or quick and dirty. She throws her whole heart and soul into the tasks that she takes on. She's one of my thought partners, a person I turn to when I have a vexing issue with no clear solution. But I've learned if you ask Susan, you better be ready. She produces meticulously detailed spreadsheets, carefully honed analyses with footnotes, and incredibly thoughtful assessments of issues. And armed with all her research, she's indomitable in her quest for better ways to do our work. She takes on the big tasks and I was looking at the resolution achievement gaps, class size, social emotional instruction, the strategic plan. For the county, she's taken on fire, safety, and libraries. She's made a profound difference for the Goleta School District, and her influence is going to be felt for the next 16 years. And not many board members in any board can make that claim. So again, it's an honor to be asked to share in the recognition of such an extraordinary person.
Thank you Supervisor Hartman. Next up, Assembly Member Steve Bennett.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. I got to know Susan as I was launching my bid for the Assembly about a year ago. And everything that Joan said, it really hit me right off the bat. It did not take long, as you guys who have worked with her a lot, I'm sure can imagine, to just see how energetic, how precise she was, how focused she was in terms of moving forward. And one of the big reasons I'm here tonight is after 16 years of that kind of service to the Goleta School Board, it's appropriate for representatives of the state of California to say thank you for what you do for education overall in terms of enhancing the professionalism of it. You serve on a remarkable board. I've heard tremendous things about the Goleta School Board. And if it wasn't for COVID, I would like to have met all of you more. But we're stuck with this very interesting challenge for all of us. But you talk about a challenge. Nobody has a bigger challenge, I think, besides the frontline medical professionals dealing with COVID than it has been the school districts trying to get ready to deal with this. And so all of you, and particularly Ms. Ben Yalco, you've got big shoes to fill with Susan stepping down. And I'm sure you'll be as talented as the other school board members are that are there. But Susan, subsequent to our meeting, I learned just how effective you were on the Goleta School Board. I really appreciate what you've done with small class sizes, your push for STEAM, and trying to keep music alive in the curriculum. Really essential, three essential things that have always been passions of mine when I was an educator at North High School in Ohio. So I hope all of you do well, but in particular, Susan, I hope the next stage in your life will be as productive as this one has been, and that you make equally strong contributions to our community like you have and the legacy you've left at the Goleta School Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is our retired superintendent, Bill Banning. Bill?
Well, I'm pleased to have this opportunity to share a few things. And I thought about what I could say. And I actually have had opportunity to sing Susan's praises on several occasions. I'm just going to read something that's not too old that I wrote about her. And Susan, you've heard these words, but I'd love to have everyone else hear them as well. Susan is both tenacious and respectful. She asks hard questions and seeks reasoned responses based on appropriate research and realistic expectations about the impact on staff time. She understands that change is cultivated best when urgency and importance are appropriately prioritized. She works with her board colleagues and constituents to create consensus that puts the interests of children at the center of every decision. She has truly been a partner to me in crafting responses to challenging situations, particularly in my role as a first-time superintendent. She can put herself in the shoes of a broad range of constituents, parents, teachers, administrators, other staff and community members. And she can think about how a policy might impact each person. I have always valued her judgment and experience. Susan Epstein is a rare individual who's capable of representing and improving our local community with integrity and a global vision for the power of public education. It was an honor to serve with you and an honor to consider you a colleague and a mentor. Congratulations on your wonderful service. The community is fortunate to have had you in this role.
Thank you, Bill. I just know the audience is also applauding and cheering. We just, we have to use our imaginations because we can't see them, but they're there. All right, next up, love to hear from former trustee from Goleta Union School District, Valerie Cantella. Valerie?
Thank you. Well, it's a privilege to be here tonight to celebrate Susan. Susan and I first met in 2004 or five when I was a geeky parent attending board meetings to advocate for a multipurpose room at Brandon School. And when I decided to run for the board, I knew I wanted to talk to each board member. But particularly Susan had run an impressive campaign and beat the next closest candidate by 6,000 votes. And although Susan and I differed, had different perspectives while on the board, we always shared the same commitment to the education of our students and a tremendous amount of respect and collaboration. One of the issues that we differed on initially was the school lunch program and providing locally grown meals from scratch, prepared in our kitchen. And in my own experience at the organic section of the grocery store, I thought there was no way that we were going to be able to do this. But Susan really spearheaded that program for us and provided information that helped us to make the decision that we could afford this. And I'm so glad that we could invest in the lives of our students that way. And I'm so glad that we had a board and Rich was on the board with us as well, that we had a board that could agree that we were disagreeing initially, but that we found information so that we can make great decisions for our community. On the majority of issues, Susan and I agreed, sometimes after long conversations, but we voted similarly and both shared a passion for providing the same programs across the nine schools, small class sizes, and a robust program beyond English language arts and math. Since my second term ended in 2014, which is hard for me to believe now, I've had the opportunity to collaborate with Susan on several projects, the most recent being Measure M. And I've always appreciated her thoroughness, knowledge, willingness to ask tough questions, and fearlessness in pursuing what is right. I'm grateful to call you, Susan, a colleague and a friend, and appreciate your many years of dedication and service to Goleta students, families, educators, and staff. You are so appreciative, appreciated, and have truly made a huge difference for our community. Goleta is a better place because of you. Finally, I'd like to share a quote which I think speaks to Susan's service. "You are here not, excuse me, you are not here merely to make a living. You are here in order to enable the world to live more amply, with greater vision, with a finer spirit of hope and achievement. You are here to enrich the world." And that's from Woodrow Wilson. So thank you, Susan.
All right, next, I'd like to invite our former Deputy Superintendent of Pupil Services, Dr. Margaret Sala. Margaret?
Thank you, Donna. So for the past nine years, I have had the honor of working with this board and other board members that have been here before, some of you, Goleta U, I'm sorry, the Board of Trustees. Susan, you've been a driving force in this district for all of that time and for many years before I got here. All of my life, my father drove into his 12 kids' brains that we are here, and I quote, "in the service of others." And that means he would be really proud of you where he didn't know you, Susan. I want to personally thank you for the influence you've had on thousands of children's lives over the past 16 years. You have leaned into the hard work of leading us to excellence in education, as well as focusing on the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our children and their families. You've brought this district forward in our work on student wellness while you have continued to advocate for the whole child. Beyond that, you've made a huge impact on these children's entire family's health. In fact, your impact has actually improved the health of our entire Goleta community and Santa Barbara County community through your work with the district and county wellness committees. You have understood and showed all of us to understand that wellness goes far beyond the food that we consume, but on the thoughts that we have, the activities that we keep, and the way that we treat each other. You've also driven policy development to ensure that all of these things and all of these focuses will continue long past either of our time here in this district. You're a woman of honor. You are a woman of fortitude. And I know that the years ahead will bring continued focus on social advocacy, no matter where you are. I thank you, and I am certain that there are many great things in your future.
And we have a modest panelist that would like to now be brought up from the audience. We'll just hear her voice. We won't see her. And that is our Teachers' Union President, Sherri Scott. And here she comes.
Hi, I'm Sherri Scott, the president of the Teachers' Union for the Goleta Union School District. I am speaking today to give thanks and the utmost appreciation to Susan Epstein. Susan has been on the board, as you all know, of the Goleta Union School District for 16 years. During those 16 years, she has spent countless hours working for the good of our school district. It is obvious to us that she's spent many of those hours, and many more on top of that, researching topics related to education. She has also always taken the time to respond to the many emails sent to her throughout the years. It's always felt as that she's listened to everyone's point of view, which is very much appreciated. Susan, we thank you for all you have done for our district. We wish you the best on your future endeavors. Be well.
Very nice. Thank you, Sherri. But there's more. We have a number of beautiful certificates for you, Susan. Now, Kristi Rockwood, my assistant, is keeping the originals nice and safe with her. But we do have some photocopies, and we're going to take turns as cabinet members sharing with you who you got a certificate from and what it says. So first off, I'm going to turn to Conrad Tedeschi, if you would please share the certificate with you.
Sure. The certificate I have is a certificate of recognition from the city of Goleta. And I will, I'm honored to read it. "The City Council of the City of Goleta, California presents this certificate of recognition, acknowledging Susan Epstein for her contributions to the Goleta Union School District. Susan Epstein was first elected to the Goleta Union School District's Board of Trustees in 2004, serving a total of 16 years. She has occupied all positions on the board, including board president, and has served on various committees, including the district's 21st Century Learning Committee, Budget Advisory Committee, County Committee on School Districts, District Gate Gifted Services, Advisory Council, Facilities Advisory Committee, Medical Benefits Committee, Special Education Committee, and Wellness Advisory Committee. The City Council of the City of Goleta proudly honors Susan Epstein for her 16 years of dedicated service to the Goleta Union School District Board of Trustees, approved on this 15th day of December 2020, and signed by Mayor Paula Perotti." Congratulations.
Very nice. Next cabinet member I'll call on is Dr. Cheryl Lynn Liu.
Good evening, everyone. And this certificate is from Senator Hannah Beth Jackson. And it says, "Certificate of recognition presented to Susan Epstein in honor of your outstanding leadership and accomplishments during your tenure as board member of Goleta Union School District Board Trustees. The extensive set of quality skills and dedication you displayed through various accomplishments were truly valuable in enhancing the quality of education in our community. Thank you for 16 years of service to our community, and good luck on your next endeavor. Signed November 4, 2020, Senator Hannah Beth Jackson."
Very nice. And next I will call on David Simmons.
Okay, I have here a certificate of resignation, recognition, oh, recognition, from the California Legislature, from the Assembly, Assembly Member Monique Limon. And this is what it says. "Certificate of recognition presented to Susan Epstein. Special recognition, heartiest congratulations, and commendations are conveyed for your dedication and enthusiasm to the education of our students. In sincere appreciation of your untiring commitment to public education and for your admirable service to the Goleta Union School District Board of Education, signed in Goleta, California, November 4, 2020."
And I, and we have a very similar looking certificate from the new Assembly Member, Steve Bennett. So we won't repeat reading it. I think they're identical, but you'll get both. Next, I'd like to call on Dr. Mary Kahn.
Thank you. So I have a certificate of special congressional recognition from our Member of Congress, Salud Carvajal, presented to Susan Epstein in honor of your years of service on the GUSD Board of Trustees and in recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the community. Goleta Union School District, November 4, 2020.
And now we're going to have the cabinet take turns reading a lengthy recognition that of resolution honoring Susan for your service. This resolution was done by our county supervisors. And so, again, this isn't the original, but a facsimile, the originals being kept very nicely for you, Susan. So I will start off by saying, "Whereas Susan Epstein was first elected to the Goleta Union School District's Board of Trustees in December 2004, serving a total of 16 years, and has occupied all the positions on the board, including president, and..."
"Whereas during her tenure, Susan served on various district committees, including the District 21st Century Learning Committee, Budget Advisory Committee, County Committee on School Districts, District Gate and Gifted Services Advisory Council, Facilities Advisory Council, Medical Benefits Committee, Special Education Committee, and Wellness Advisory Committee, and..."
"Whereas Susan supported reducing the achievement gap and increasing test scores dramatically for all demographic subgroups, including English language learners and low-income students, and..."
"Whereas Susan backed the adoption of a strategic plan that led to high-quality instruction personalized to students' need, coupled with lower class sizes and professional development for teachers and all staff, including a commitment to STEM education, art, music, and social emotional instruction, and..."
"Whereas Susan will end her time on the board during the COVID-19 pandemic, advocating for a robust and rigorous remote learning program with online classrooms, recorded lessons, interactive class meetings, and assignments, as well as art, music, exercise, reading, math, and science, with extensions for a wide range of learners, and..."
"Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered and resolved that this Board of Supervisors honors and commends Susan Epstein for her 16 years of service to the Goleta Union School District Board of Trustees, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara, State of California, this 20th day of October 2020, by unanimous vote of all members present. This is signed by Supervisor Das Williams, Greg Hart, Joan Hartman, Peter Adam, and Steve Lavagnino."
Brilliant choreography.
Thank you. And I will share some words, Susan, if I may. Susan, your 16 years of service as trustee here at GUSD is a phenomenal accomplishment. You have always kept the betterment of students at the heart of what you do. You have ensured that the whole child is addressed through not just academics, but in other vital ways, such as wellness, PE, arts, and STEAM. Your expertise in the area of technology helped influence our approach to a robust and rigorous remote learning program. You are ever thoughtful, purposeful, and mindful in your approach. Your eye for detail is a match for no other. Who else will find the missing commas now? Or help massage critical communications? In addition to serving students, you are a steward of environmental causes. I learned the meaning of bioswells from you. Your involvement in the facilities master planning ensured that our work will continue to encompass environmental endeavors. You went above and beyond your service on numerous committees, including 21st Century Learning, Budget Advisory, County School Districts, Gate Advisory Council, Facilities Advisory, Medical Benefits, Special Education, and Wellness Advisory. Your leadership for Measure M, the campaign, was pivotal in the passage by 71%, and done with just $135, which I believe you paid for out of your pocket. Susan, you were an excellent thought partner and have displayed tremendous boardmanship, being able to unite us through controversial decisions. On behalf of the GUSD students and community, we thank you for 16 incredible years. Congratulations, Susan. We will miss you. And there's one more thing we have for you. And it's a lovely plaque. It might be hard to see, but there's a gavel here and an inscription. And it says, "Presented to Susan Epstein in grateful appreciation for 16 years of dedicated service to our students, families, and community. Thank you. Presented by the Board of Trustees and Staff of Goleta Union School District." So we will get this to you along with those lovely certificates. And I will turn it over to you now. I think you would like to say a few things.
What about the board?
Well, okay, wait a minute. You're right. Let's go to the board. Hold that thought. Thank you, Dr. Mayer. Why don't we begin with you?
Oh, well, I knew this day would come, but it's here. It's usually pretty trite to say it's been a pleasure to work with you. But in Susan's case, I can honestly say it has been a pleasure to work with you. In my 40 years on the Goleta School Board, I know you're thinking, "But he looks so young." I have never come across a fellow board member quite like Susan Epstein. Over the past 16 years, you have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to a high-quality education for all the children of our community. You have demonstrated an amazing work ethic by always being prepared and proactive. You have demonstrated that you are driven by the highest values and belief in public education. You've demonstrated an evidence-based, data-driven approach to decision-making. You've demonstrated a sensitivity to all stakeholders, including parents and families, teachers and district staff, and the community at large. You've demonstrated intelligence, excellent judgment, and thoughtful analysis that we all have come to admire. You've demonstrated a respectful approach to interacting with your fellow board members, the administrative team, and everyone who comes before the board. You've demonstrated inspiring leadership and communication skills. You've demonstrated a drive to get things done, to move the board towards reaching consensus, and to help the district achieve important goals. You've accomplished so much during your tenure, including helping us focus more on environmental, nutrition, and health issues, small class size, equity, a broad curriculum, and just so much more. When Susan Epstein joined this board, Goleta hit the jackpot. Everyone who cares about education, who cares about the education of Goleta's children has benefited from your tenure on the board. We owe you our heartfelt thanks for your unwavering service to our community. With all your amazing assets, I wish you all the best with your future endeavors. I will miss your keen insights. I will miss your depth of knowledge. I will miss your broad understanding of the district. I will miss your collegiality. But most of all, I'll just plain miss you.
Wow. Thank you, Dr. Mayer. I will call on Dr. Corvina Sol next.
I didn't want to have to follow Dr. Mayer. Everything was so true to what I feel. Since everyone has pointed out so many prominent things, Susan, so I thought I'd start with a little personal anecdote. Susan was the only person I knew when I joined the board. And because when I was a first-time volunteer parent for math club at school, I was handed this giant binder of materials. It had been prepared by Susan, who had volunteered in the same position years earlier. It had been passed down a year per year, and with such a complete and well-organized lesson plan, it looked like it was like a standalone curriculum and had been prepared by a teacher. Now that I know Susan much better, it shouldn't have been a surprise at all. She is just the most organized, careful, does thorough research, and is a very gifted leader. She very successfully headed up important projects, both within the school district, including doing some very heavy lifting and research above and beyond on projects, as well as for the community, like Supervisor Hartman mentioned, the Goleta Library, community wildfire preparedness. Most recently organizing, this was brought up, the Yes on M Committee that resulted in our facilities bond passing last month, even during a pandemic. And throughout her work with the district, though, she's mindful of the importance of the environment, sustainability, wellness, and has had great influence within our district on class size, maintaining music and STEAM programs. She consistently brings creative ideas to the discussion and genuinely sees opportunities instead of hurdles. She's thoughtful, exceedingly well-prepared, and a collaborative problem solver. Our district is just so lucky to have had her talents on the board for 16 years, and I will really miss working together. Thank you, Susan.
All right, let's have Luis Reyes Martin.
Hold on one second.
Hold on one second.
I love the sound of children is joyful.
So like Rich, I knew this day was coming. And it's bittersweet because we're both so grateful for all the time that you've given of yourself to this district and excited for you and your future. So I know that many others have shared all the, you know, amazing accomplishments, and there are so many. I also want to share similar to Corinne. When I first came onto the board as a, you know, first-time school board member, Susan was one of the models for me as a school board member. And I'm so glad Valerie is here, too, because she was such a great support when I came on the board as well. And it was really through your example that I saw what it meant to be in service of the district and really the importance of doing your homework, you know, talking to staff, talking to teachers and parents, learning the issues, putting in the time and the work. And you are just, have always been such a great example and role model of that. And it's truly, you know, one of the reasons that I've, you know, been able to grow as a school board member. And I think we've all, you know, learned from you and seen from you. So I feel a tremendous amount of responsibility to continue the level of excellence that you have set for all of us. And I just appreciate so much how, no matter the issue, you are such an amazing critical thinker. And you have just these great questions and things that you bring to the table that we may not have considered and that often lead to a better outcome. And that is just so amazing and just benefits everyone, especially, you know, all the kids that we're here to serve. So I want to just thank you immensely for the 16 years that you've given to GUSD. I know that your leadership will continue. No matter what you're doing, I know that you'll continue to be an amazing leader in the community. And I will miss being able to just spend time talking to you on the phone or in person when we were able to, just hashing out, you know, different issues or problem solving. You're such an incredible problem solver. And I hope that you'll indulge me if I call you on some of those things in the future anyway. But just really thank you. I'm so proud to have been able to serve with you on the board and to count you as a role model, a mentor, and most importantly, a friend and a fellow mom. So thank you so much. And although I won't get to see you every, you know, third Wednesday, I hope that, you know, we'll still continue to see each other. And I know we will outside of this setting. So thank you and congratulations.
And I would love to invite our newest elective trustee to speak next, Vicky Benjakov.
Hi. Thank you, Susan, for your service, for your leadership as a board member for the last 16 years. I think everybody's sharing a little personal story. I'd like to share that, too. As a parent, you know, the first time I reached out to the board, Susan called me back and we chatted on the phone for, you know, we started with the environmental topic, and for some reason, we ended up talking for three hours from our science education all the way to how to modernize our classroom. It's just, you know, that's just, there's so much that she had bring to the table. She's the kind of board member that always listens to parents. I don't know, I probably just keep going on and she listened to me. And she has the student's best interest at heart. And you're always informed on the issues and always very thoughtful and very respectful. And you're very persistent. And I think you're a great model for any school board member, and you're a great model for all of us. And I think, you know, just, we share a lot of the same passion for a lot of topics. We're both passionate about environment, about supporting STEM, art and music, advocating for nutritious meal for our students, you know, social emotional development for our students, supporting our English learners. And the list goes on and on. And I know that it just, I have a big shoe to fill. And I promise to do everything I can to advocate for every student in our district to make sure that they have the access to the best education possible. And I wish you the best, and I can't wait to see what comes next to you.
Thank you. And our final trustee this evening, our Board President, Sholay Jahangir.
Well, I've been trying to hold it together and not lose it before I started. Rich, you broke me a little. I'm regraining it. But why should you hold it in when you're watching brilliance? Why should you keep back what you should tell to someone who shines so bright? You should let them know the world is better because they're in it. The world is safer because they care. And you sleep better at night knowing that they stand by you. And Susan, those are all the things I have in my heart for you. When I first met you, I was in awe of your brilliance and your dedication and your intelligence. I thought, I'm going to sit next to this lady? I'm going to look like a big old ding dong. But that's not who you are. You make us shine. You are a giver. You're generous. You are warm. You're a remarkable mother. Your children are examples of the children we all hope we can raise. You care so much about the children of GLEDA. I know how much you carry on your shoulders. I know how many nights you've stayed awake thinking about how to make it better for others. And it's evident in every action you take, in every question. Every time you push harder to make us be better, it's because you care. And those are immensely beautiful qualities. I have been truly honored to sit next to you. I have become a better board member knowing you. I think I'm a much better person knowing you. And your gift is for generations. The ripple will continue and continue. For every child who has come through GLEDA is better off because you have been in that seat. And I know all of society benefits for you are the kind that will go out and make sure that if there is a problem, you will work on it. I've seen you fight for fire safety, nutrition, science, arts, gardens. There isn't a topic I haven't seen you advocate for. And from all that, from my heart, from my own children's benefit, thank you. I know your next chapter is a beautiful one. I know the world is better because you're going out there to fight for something great. And I just want you to know, as a human being, we are all blessed that you were brought to this earth. And I hope that I will live up to continuing in your shadow. And there's no shoes. I won't even try to fill those shoes because a size 1,000, I cannot wear. But you are a really beautiful soul, a beautiful human being, and you will be missed tremendously. But know that we want you to go out into the world and do good for others because we can't keep you all to ourselves. So from all of the families in GLEDA, I know they're cheering you on and wishing you the best. And we will celebrate in every victory you have. So I don't say farewell because we never stop crossing paths. I say, good luck, seize life, and keep giving because that's who you are. Thank you.
Now, Susan, as you catch your breath for a moment, I do want to point out we have some very special guests that are attending this evening. I noticed that we have our former State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Jack O'Connell, with us in the audience. Thank you, Jack, for attending this night. We also have former County Supervisor Janet Wolfe. Janet, thank you. We appreciate having you here this evening. And we also have a former trustee, Yvonne DeGraw. Thank you, Yvonne, for joining us this evening. All of you have really helped make this even more special. Okay, I don't think I've forgotten anyone now. And so, Susan, you have a turn.
Well, first, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for all those kind words. I'm incredibly touched by the many people thanking me for my service. And I really think it's me who should be thanking you. I was surprised to be asked to run for school board when I was a parent of preschoolers. One of the GLEDA schools had just been closed after a year of meetings with angry parents, some angry parents. And both parent and staff morale was lower than it had been. Other parents asked me to run because they wanted someone who hadn't been involved in these difficult meetings where many people had felt hurt. I had previously been a teacher, had run a nonprofit organization that partnered with public schools, and was an attorney. But I had no agenda whatsoever, no particular goals for the district, just an interesting role to consider. I met with each board member, each principal, walked each campus, and talked with some parents. And I decided I was willing to try elective office and could commit to one four-year term. For the campaign, I walked house to house and talked with community members. I listened and observed. And people told me that the GLEDA schools were already good, but some of them did have ideas and requests. And I thought about them. And by the end of the campaign, I had developed a long list of changes I wanted to explore as a board member. One of my first activities as a new board member was a training on good board governance, where I learned that the Brown Act prohibits sharing thoughts outside of meetings with more than one other board member per topic. So at this training, I invited Dean Nevins to join me for lunch. We had been opponents in the campaign, and I thought it'd be good to become colleagues and maybe even allies. Dean, do you remember when I shared with you at that lunch a list of changes I wanted to explore? I think you found it somewhat crazy that I had developed this long list. But for eight years, we were Brown Act partners. And Dean, your creativity and positivity was inspiring. And those years of working together will always be special to me. And Dean, well, it took me 16 years, and I think I've completed the list. Seriously, it has been so rewarding to work, to have this opportunity, to work with talented colleagues, to shape policy, programs, and budgets, and wrestle with challenging conflicts that are both intellectually and emotionally engaging. You've already heard some of the highlights. We spent a year in 2005 working on the first known strategic plan in 40 years for the district. That, I think, has had a lot to do with why our district has been very successful over the years. People across our state and even across our country at times have asked why our test scores outpace state averages in every demographic group. And I often point to our talented staff and also our strategic plan. In education, there's no one silver bullet that can improve schools. But I think the combination of emphases in that plan have been incredibly successful. A big part of it was an emphasis on continuous improvement. And we're never done because of that focus. We keep working on it. We've been pioneers. Only recently did many districts across the country start to recognize the need for social emotional support for students. Since 2005, when our district had any kind of surplus of funds, we would choose to invest it in psychologists. And that resulted in more recent years in at least one at each site, plus bilingual community liaisons and a social worker. We researched and adopted a district-wide social emotional curriculum that's evidence-based and provided training for the entire staff in this approach. This longtime focus was highly unusual, and I think it's been a big part of our district's success. As many people talked about, I am very proud of our work on healthy and sustainable practices. Just a few meetings into my first term, we voted to eliminate pesticides on all of our campuses, about 120 acres in the GLEDA Valley. It was bold and unique. Many in the broader community didn't think it was possible for a large agency to provide beautiful and functional grounds without chemical pesticides. But it is, and we proved it. We were invited to countywide meetings chaired by then-supervisor Salud Carbajal to share how we did this and lessons learned with all the jurisdictions throughout the county. You've also heard about how we voted to transform our school meals from processed food wrapped in plastic, trucked across the country, to locally sourced produce and meals cooked from scratch. And we hired fantastic food service directors, and they trained our staff to cook delicious, healthy food that's been popular with our students. We drafted and approved a wellness policy that was more comprehensive than was required by law because we felt that was the GLEDA way. We led, and the policy has continued to guide us and our amazing food service program. Our facilities' master plan is also a beautiful plan. From STEAM labs to renewable energy projects, I learned so much from the process, and I'm excited to see the projects get implemented over the next years. A big night for me was when we approved our dual-immersion Spanish language program. That meant so much. Throughout my time on the board, I advocated for children learning two or more languages at a young age, broaden speakers on the topic of brain development and learning science, but struggled to get three votes. When we finally voted unanimously to move forward with that program, we cried, we hugged. I envisioned our children benefiting enormously, and I look forward to hearing more over the years. Beyond those, without a doubt, the best part of this role has been the people I've gotten to know and spend time with through our professional victories and our life challenges. I've had this opportunity to work with talented colleagues as fellow board members, three extraordinary superintendents, strong cabinet members and principals, dedicated teachers and staff, passionate, caring parents, and our business and nonprofit partners. We have such a strong supportive community. I'm so glad we have parents and other community members who write us emails and stop us everywhere we go in town, who are passionate about the children in our community and making sure we offer the best education possible and provide the best future possible for our kids. We truly have the best teachers and staff in the world. To our staff, I often marvel at your dedication, creativity, and professionalism. I learned so much as a parent volunteer in the classroom about amazing teaching and caring staff. And as a board member visiting schools, I've been continually excited and impressed. I've really enjoyed all the district committees I've served on. I've watched our administrators and teachers lead those committees so skillfully and learned so much about great meeting facilitation. Most of all, I want to thank my family. To my kids, Chloe and Leo, thank you for your patience. We've had so many grocery store trips that took more than an hour because someone stopped to talk with me about what was happening in their child's classroom or with their work conditions or on a playground. Thank you for sharing me with our community. I've now watched you blossom as young adults, build on the strong foundation that you received in this school district and take on leadership roles at your college. I've been learning from you since the day you were born, and I will continue to learn from you, cheer for you, love you, and be proud of you. To my wonderful partner, John, I couldn't have served this district as fully and as long without your solid support. You have been with me through highs and lows. Some of our board decisions follow large amounts of data to observe, school visits, numbers to crunch, and months of agonized consideration. School board service involves so much human drama. I've been elated after meetings. I've cried after meetings, sometimes the same meetings. There are so many challenges, so many challenging and heartbreaking decisions. John, thank you, thank you, thank you. I remember my first board meeting vividly. It began with recognizing Janet Wolfe and Doug Martin's service to the GLEDA School Board. They gave the board a wood gavel, which represented their sense of the importance of the school board role. And during the three years I served as board president, I used that gavel to call meetings to order. Janet, you shared with everyone that it's critical to speak up for what you believe in. And I took that advice to heart. Doug asked that we. Doug asked that we get our student government accounts in line so that we get a perfect annual audit. And thanks to Conrad, we finally resolved that, though it took us about 15 years. A couple years later, Mayner Buck and Jane Rudolph retired from the board. Mayner asked us to keep an eye on balanced budgets and to remember our obligation to taxpayers to manage their money responsibly. Jane and I are both lawyers, and we had fun comparing perspectives when the board faced legal matters. In the same way that we've heard that native Alaskans have many words for snow, lawyers can have 100 perspectives on the same situation. When we agreed, people knew for sure we were on to something. When Jane completed her board service, she asked that we protect our music program for all students and we expand our preschool program. And I'm glad to say, throughout my 16 years, we have managed our money responsibly, provided a music program for all our students, and significantly expanded our preschool program. Our community owes so much to these past leaders for their vision. Phil Gadsby asked us to preserve neighborhood schools when he retired from the board. And as we faced a range of challenges, we've continued our neighborhood schools. When we recognized Dean Nevens' service, he thanked each of us personally, and I think he's brilliant, so I'm copying him. I also had the privilege to serve alongside Valerie, who you heard from earlier. Valerie too is brilliant. Valerie and I don't agree on everything. But we have so much respect for one another that we both learned a lot from the other's perspective. We learned to never assume, to truly listen. And in the end, we found that we largely shared values, and our district was stronger because we took the time to find common ground and build on it. I asked Valerie to work with us on the recent bond measure campaign, and it reinforced how much we enjoy working together. Valerie, as I've told you before, I would happily join forces to tackle any project. Eight years ago, I asked a parent who was asking really good questions in district committee meetings. Or I observed, I observed a parent asking these really good questions. And I called her and asked her, even though I didn't know her very well, her name was Yvonne DeGraw, if she would consider running for the board. Well, she quickly told me she is not a politician, and it wasn't her thing. Okay, there. A few months later, Yvonne called back, said she'd been thinking about it and was ready to do it. She brought a scientist thoughtfulness to her board service. She's incredibly fair, is careful to never exaggerate, and always has solid evidence to back her assertions. Yvonne did a lot of research outside of our meetings and calmly presented her findings and suggested recommendations for us to consider. She was a remarkable board member. And Yvonne, I've been very amused over the past year to see just how much you've gotten involved with politics, applying your scientific perspective to careful commentary. I've also had the privilege of serving with three extraordinary superintendents who taught me so much. I feel like I've had a front row seat to watch masterful management. It's really not easy to run a government agency with hundreds of employees, hundreds of acres of property, responsible for thousands of small children, constantly changing regulations, and so much more. And yet, all three have been quite spectacular managers. Each was particularly strong at developing shared ownership of ideas among widely diverse stakeholders, and each with their own style. I served with Superintendent Kathy Blumer the longest. Kathy, you taught me so much about time management. We used to joke as board members that we had to be on our A-game when we met with Kathy because she expected our best at all times. You can see from the length of my remarks tonight that I might need a time management refresher with Kathy. But truly, Kathy, you brought about a renaissance in our district by setting high and clear expectations. And the teachers, the assistant superintendents, and all the staff responded. It was amazing for me to have ideas to explore for improving the district and to know that I was working with talented people all across the district who could implement these ideas well, often much better than anything I had initially envisioned. My next work was Superintendent Bill Banning. Bill, there are so many great things to say about you. I'm so glad to have served as board president for two years, working closely with you. Tonight, I'd like to highlight that Bill is an artist, and he brought an artist's eye to our district and his management style. No matter how busy and how much work on his plate, especially with the massive change moving to the Common Core standards. Bill, you knew how to be present in the moment and to make sure each person felt heard. I learned so much watching you make our physical spaces more beautiful, design a flexible website, but also work collaboratively with us to craft beautiful language in our revised strategic plan and our first LCAP that received acclaim across the state. Donna, you've been amazing to work with. You are so authentic and taught me so much about valuing joy in a professional way. As a manager, you want everyone you work with to also find joy, and we do, even in years with tragedies. Donna, we have been through so much. Sickness, deaths, fires, floods, a pandemic. And you recognize this human need to connect and in the midst of tragedy to find joy. No matter the challenges, you've led us masterfully through this. Maintaining excellence, all while managing a massive endeavor and inspiring us to keep finding purpose in what we do. Next, I need to highlight Deputy Superintendent Margaret Sala, who's retiring this month after a many-decade career in public education. We've worked together many years and been through a lot. Margaret is brilliant, bold, direct, and savvy. Margaret, your presentations have kept us wide awake and engaged at late hours. You brought us in as board members, trusting us to share in the intellectual issues our district faces. We've been so lucky to have an administrator willing to create precedence, working insane hours, often doing the job of eight people, and has the biggest heart for children, all children, all challenges children can face. Nationally, people talk about school districts being bloated with administrators. In Greta, I strongly disagree. I've been in awe of the amount of work and responsibility our administrators shoulder. I know long lists of names can be boring to listen to, but these people are so significant to me that I'll do my best to say them without tearing up. Two, Bob Wood, Ed Armstrong, Ned Shane Wetter, Lisa Maglione, Joanne Mead Young, Lynette Meyer, Dan Cooperman, Alzana, Ralph Pactor, Liz Barnett, Sharon Baird, Felicia Rogero, Amanda Ichbal, Jay Sullivan, Ricardo Ariza, Donna Madrigal, Bridget Brainy, Bridget Haley, Kim Bruce, Kim Leung, Joanna Lauer, Ryan Spar, Cheryl and Lou, Conrad Tadashi, David Simmons, Mary Kahn, and so many others. Your dedication, resourcefulness, your big hearts for children, as board members, we owe you so much. Not just because you've answered our thousands of questions, but up with our tons of ideas to explore on top of your already full plates, but also your remarkable presentations that make complex information clear so we could make informed decisions as board members. And your inclusion of a wide group of stakeholders so we could govern well a diverse district. And thank you for gracefully smiling at our board's joke, often told to you again around 11:00 PM that you can take the rest of the night off. Supporting our administrative leaders are the capable staff who work hard and make them look good. I especially want to thank Kristy Rockwood and Stephanie Gardner, who smoothly do the impossible. There are so many other teachers and people in our district and close partners that are magical, that I've learned so much from. A few others to highlight, though not all are still with us. The Speziak family, the Rodriguez family, Connie Everie, Jen Cechio, Karen Pickford, Peggy Grossman, Emily Is Marian, Jim Pegado, Danny Fitzgibbons, Lisa Rivas, John Clark, Luann Miller, Lori Goodman, and so close and special to my heart, all my kids' teachers. I could talk for hours, and don't worry, I'm not going to go that long, about what I've learned from each of you. We are blessed to have so much talent in this district and in this community. Now, to my current board colleagues. Corinne. Corinne, you've been incredibly dedicated to this district, attending a huge number of committee meetings and taking the issue so seriously, studying and researching them in depth. I've learned so much through the information you've shared. Luce, you are such a gifted communicator. I often marvel at your ability to say just the right words immediately after we hear a presentation or a plea from the community. You've turned around many sticky situations through your well-chosen responses. I've truly enjoyed working closely with you on many issues, making our district more accessible and inclusive for everyone. Sholay, you have this incredible ability to reach people emotionally where they didn't even know they needed that. In so many ways, you were the ideal board president this past year while we faced a pandemic and other tragedies. You really lead with your heart, and we all needed that. You've truly brought an additional popo to our board meetings. Rich, we've served together for so many years. It's hard to imagine Wednesday evenings without you. We are so lucky in our district to have an internationally acclaimed academic leader on educational psychology in our midst and the author of the best book on school board governance. One lesson I've learned by working with you is about asking questions rather than making statements. That might sound like a simple thing, but you mastered the art and science of that, and it is so important. You also have a solid ethical compass, are so dedicated to children, and you balance your deep expert knowledge of learning with a reliable presence for the district and have reasonable expectations for the rest of us. All of you have become dear friends, and I'm so looking forward to no longer having the Brown Act come between my relationship with each of you. As I mentioned, some of the school board members at the completion of their board service shared words of advice for the remaining board members and the newly elected board members. I'm not going to do that. There are so many aspects of education I care deeply about. I figure I've had 16 years to share my opinions, and I have. And you guys, you've got this. I've seen that you know to research the topics on the board agenda and the items that aren't listed but need to be on the next agenda. You know to ask the important questions, to listen, to really listen to everyone. You know to always put the children first. And then there's been this final year of my board service, a year like no other. This year, the centrality and importance of public schools in the fabric of our community has been clearer than ever. With the advent of teleconference board meetings held over Zoom, we've had more people participating than ever. And together, we are shouldering the fundamentals of people's lives. To the community, you've trusted our small team to make significant decisions that impact your health, safety, work, and the current well-being and future of our children. And that is tremendously heavy. We've taken this seriously, considering the health and safety of kids and their extended families, the health and safety of staff and their families, and truly the health and safety of the entire community. We're not just making choices about our school district budget and our priorities, but we're reconciling strong disagreement among our stakeholders about urgent matters like whether to open school and how. And we've navigated all of this with care for all in our community and with respect for one another. I do feel great leaving the district in such talented hands. Vicky, I am confident you're going to be a fantastic board member. And the five of you, together with our amazing cabinet, staff, and community, will continue to guide our district brilliantly, no matter the challenges ahead. Thank you to the parents, the district staff, and the community for your support, for your trust, and for this awesome and meaningful opportunity to serve.
Bravo, Susan. Bravo. And I know our attendees are probably shooting fireworks off right now. That was just incredible. We're, we're going to miss you, but we know you're not going to be far away. So this isn't goodbye, it's until we see you again.